I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome, everybody. I see some new faces out there for new staff, so thank you very much for joining us and for joining our district, and welcome. Glad to have you. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Allam.
Yes.
Odie.
Yep.
Saxors absent. Telkot?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
All right. With that, if there are no questions or concerns on the agenda as it's written, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented tonight, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, conflict of interest disclosure and waiver requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items this evening to address in terms of waiver requests. The first is for myself. My spouse, Amanda Larson, works in the Brandon Valley School District as a substitute school nurse. She provides those nursing services in accordance to the standard substitute nursing pay as outlined within the classified handbook for the 21-22 school year. I would certainly field any questions that you may have on that. The waiver if, the waiver request, if you choose to authorize it because the terms of the contract are fair and reasonable and not contrary to the public interest, that you're going to take action on that.
Any questions on Dr. Larson's waiver request? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented, please.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Waiver requests, next, please.
Dr. Telkot, as a former employee, was eligible for the early retirement benefit as outlined within the master contract. This is year three of that contractual benefit. Would certainly recommend approval of the waiver as its terms are fair and reasonable and not contrary to public interest.
Any questions on Dr. Telkot's waiver request? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call, vote, Mr. Lombard.
Odie.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Telkot.
Let's see.
Allam.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to our approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 12, '21. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. That takes us to our community input section of the agenda, and we have Dr. Amy Kelly here tonight to talk to us.
Dr. Kelly, if you'd go to that podium and push the, it's, I believe, a pink talk button or blue talk button, you'll get a red light on your microphone. You got it.
Thanks. So, many of you know me. I'm Dr. Amy Kelly. I'm an OB-GYN in Sioux Falls, and I'm the legislative chair for the American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology in South Dakota. And I'm sure that some of you remember me from last year speaking about the COVID virus, and I'm really, unfortunately, I'm here again to speak about the same thing. I would ask, I have two asks. One is that you consider requiring the COVID vaccine when it gets full authorization from the FDA for children five and up? I realize it's probably not going to be until next school year, or maybe if we're lucky in the spring. And I would ask that we require masks in schools this year until at least 85% of Minnehaha County has gotten the COVID vaccine, and that all students five and up are able to be vaccinated, which hopefully will be sometime in the late fall to early winter. I realize that a mask mandate may actually feel quite impossible, given these times we're in, so I would offer another option below that. At the very least, I think we should revert back to what we had last year and recommend masks, or possibly even say that we expect students to wear masks. The words we use matter, and I think that we all know that using the word "optional mask" means that most people just won't do it. I think that the experience of last year speaks to that. When I was deciding what to say tonight, the same thought kind of kept popping into my head. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. And I thought, how could anybody not want masks to be mandated, or at least recommended in schools? But after thinking about it, I realized that a lot of people had different experiences this year, and that not everybody experienced COVID the same way. So I just want to tell you a few of the things people I know and what some people experienced. Maybe, maybe nothing changed for you. Maybe the only thing that changed is you couldn't find things in the store, or your kids had to wear masks, or you had to wear a mask in Costco. Or maybe your kids lost weeks of school because they were close contacts. Maybe some of you lost jobs. Maybe some of you got COVID and you weren't sick at all, and you're like, well, what's the big deal? Maybe some of you lost family members. My dad died in October. One of the OB-GYNs in my group has a large extended family, and she lost 25, 25 members of her family to COVID in the last year. A teacher in our school spent months in the hospital, not knowing if her husband was going to die or not. My grandma spent the whole year alone doing puzzles and only seeing her grandkids through the screen door or through FaceTime. And my nurse that I have now worked in the COVID units. In one week, she took 20 patients out in body bags. So I think a lot of us have experienced this last year very differently. My nurse actually did get COVID when she worked in the unit, and she now has permanent lung damage and has to see the pulmonologist every three months. She's certainly not the only one who's had life changes from having COVID. I think we all remember what school was like last year, those of us that experienced it. Teachers and students out for weeks at a time, substitute teachers, so many substitute teachers. It wasn't pretty, and it didn't really start getting better until Sioux Falls started mandated masks, and then things did kind of start to turn a corner. The data over the past year, all over the world, including here, shows that masks do make a difference. So this year, I have good and bad news. The good news is the vaccine. I mean, it's very safe, despite what you might hear or see on Facebook. It's definitely safer than COVID, which one in three survivors have heart or lung damage from. 90% or more of physicians, both at Avera and Sanford, have gotten the COVID vaccine, so they trust it. And it's very effective. Right now, only 99.5% of the people dying of COVID are, they're all unvaccinated. That means hardly anybody that's vaccinated has died of COVID. The bad news is that not enough people have gotten it. In Minnehaha County, just over 50% of the residents of Minnehaha County that can get the vaccine have gotten it. That number's quite deceiving now for schools, because that's everybody. If you look at different ages, people who are 65 and up, 80% of people have gotten the vaccine. So they actually have herd immunity. So if you're hanging out with 65 and up, you're good. But if you look at 18 to 65-year-olds, it's barely 40%. And if you look at 12 to 17-year-olds, it's just over 15%. Now, that was last month, so it might be a little higher now. Hopefully, it is. But for schools, that means that, depending on if you're in elementary school or middle or high school, at the most, you have 30% of your population that's vaccinated, at the most, probably much, much less. So we're going to have cases this year, no doubt. Over the summer, any pediatrician in town will tell you, and the family docs will tell you, that one in four COVID cases have been in kids over the summer. So there's no question that kids get this and pass it along. And all of those reasons are reasons I would recommend considering mandating the vaccine when appropriate, when it's fully authorized by the FDA. There's already an exemption in process for vaccine exemptions, so it really, it would use those same vaccine exemptions. The other bad, the bad news I have is Delta. So the Delta variant is much worse. It's, you really only have to look at the news coming out of Houston and Louisiana and other parts of Texas to see that. 93% of COVID cases in the United States are now the Delta variant. We haven't seen as much of it here yet, but it will come for us. It's a different beast. Younger patients are significantly ill, a lot of them with no risk factors. And vaccinated people don't die from Delta, for the most part, but there is some evidence they can spread it, hence why the CDC has recommended that even vaccinated people wear masks indoors. Delta's also 1,000 times more contagious than the original COVID virus. So that means that it is on par with chickenpox. And any of us that grew up with chickenpox knows how contagious chickenpox is. And I believe that is a required vaccine for schools. Right now, in Louisiana, Texas, and other states that are, have lots of Delta cases, 9% to 10% of people who get Delta and are unvaccinated are being hospitalized, 1 in 10. And that does include children. 10% of children getting COVID in Texas right now are being hospitalized. That is a significant amount. So if you think about a virus that's as contagious as chickenpox, and you have it in a classroom with 30 kids, all of them get exposed. Let's say 20 of them get sick. Let's say all 30 of them get sick, just for the sake of examples. That means three of them will end up in the hospital. And of the 10%, 1 in 3 of those kids will end up in the ICU. So that means if you have one classroom with 30 kids that get Delta, you have three in the hospital and you have one in the ICU. You can quickly see how that's a problem. So, how many kids are in the district? What's our plan for a large outbreak, which realistically could happen? I think that those are things we need to think about. The plan that you guys have come up with would be great if it was June, but it's not June, it's August, and Delta is raging the Southwest. And so I think that the new things that are going on in our world need to be taken into account. Additionally, just for your teachers, the data out of Europe about the Delta variant shows that 1 in 5 pregnant women require hospitalization. So 20% of pregnant women have moderate to severe COVID, if they get the Delta variant. And many, many of those need hospitalization. If you are in your third trimester and you get moderate to severe COVID, you will almost always get hospitalized. I don't know how many pregnant teachers there are this year, but I'm guessing there's more than five. The CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics have both clearly stated that children, teens, teachers, and staff should all be wearing masks in schools this year, this fall, regardless of vaccination status, because, specifically because of the Delta variant. And because children under 12 can't get vaccinated yet. So we have a whole population of kids that are completely, have no protection, except us. We're here to protect them. Public health decisions shouldn't be decided by a survey or a popularity contest. The CDC and the AAP literally only exist to give these types of guidance. And perhaps it's time that we do something different and listen. It's really unfortunate, and it's super unfair that you guys are put in this position, your school board. Like, you shouldn't be making public health decisions, you shouldn't be on the front lines, but that's just the way it is. And I realize it's impossible to please everyone, but I also want to remind you that it's not really your job as a board member. School boards are here to serve as representatives and advocates for their community. Your job is to prioritize the needs and interests of students in the school. What's a greater priority than making schools safe for our kids and safe for our community? Safety and health really must be met before children can learn. Additionally, what are we really showing our kids when we're not willing to do something for someone else's safety and health? We all want this to go away. We all want it to end. God, we all want it to end. But wishing it away doesn't really actually make it go away. We actually need to follow the public health measures and get vaccinated and wear masks until enough people are vaccinated. With Delta, it looks like enough people, enough people are 85%. And I think unfortunately, to protect each other, to protect our kids, that might mean we all have to wear masks again as it gets colder, as Delta shows up here. Masking is really to prevent, to protect the unvaccinated and those under 12. I'm not worried about COVID. I'm protected, I'm vaccinated, I'll be fine. I'm not the one that needs protected. It's our kids under 12 and the unvaccinated that need protected, because that's the ones that Delta will kill and maim. Statistically speaking, someone who's vaccinated is actually twice as likely to get struck by lightning than to die of COVID. If the school district decides not to follow the CDC and the AAP guidelines regarding masking, and they do say recommend, they don't say required, be nice, required, that's what I like, but of course, I live in the real world, just as all of you do. I mean, do you really think that we're not all responsible if something happens to our kids? If not legally, then morally? If I don't follow the standard of care as a physician, then, in the guidelines of my medical specialty, then I get sued, I lose my license, I lose my job, because I didn't do my job. I didn't take care of my patients. So my question isn't really, why, my question isn't really, why aren't we vaccinated? Like, my question is that, why aren't we following these guidelines? Why can't we do the safest thing for our kids and follow these recommendations? What's the reason why we can't protect our community? That should be our question. Why aren't we doing the best thing? When the consequences are so high? It's really not hyperbole to say that people's lives are at stake, not after the last year. Thank you. And I'm really happy to talk to anybody here, any of you guys too, about any medical questions you have. There's a lot of disinformation out there, and it can be really hard to discern who to listen to, who to trust. And I'm happy to talk to anybody about questions you have about the vaccine. I have these conversations every day with patients, and most people just, they just don't know. You know, like, they just have questions, and that's okay. It's okay to have questions. And that's what your doctors are here to ask. So if you don't want to ask me, ask your doctor. I just want everybody to be safe. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would have additional community input tonight that would like to speak? All right. Thank you. That takes us to bills and claims. Mr. Lombard.
Okay, bills and claims are the majority of your stack of agenda this, this month. I thought it was appropriate that I kind of go through the whole accounts payable process with the Board of Education, just in case you're not aware of what transpires, and it's not just a matter of paying the bill or writing a check. I've heard that comment quite a bit. You just need to write a check. There is over 1,000 invoices that are processed in this packet alone tonight. And the whole process is that generally, a requisition, a request to order something comes from a staff member, teacher, staff member, et cetera. And then that's sent up to my office, we compare that to the budget for approval, we prepare a PO and then send it. The items are then shipped, and then they're checked in by the buildings. The items are checked in by the buildings by checking off on a packing slip. That packing slip then comes up to my office, and it's compared to a purchase order. Then it's compared to the invoice, to make sure all those are accurate. The invoice is then entered into the system by the invoice number, which is a good double check of duplicate invoice payment. Cannot happen if it's, if it's in the system, it'll flag that, that that number has come up before. And then last but not least, I personally, I review every invoice that goes through there. I've made the statement that in 32 years, I've touched every invoice. That might be a lie, because when it's, I've gotten older and there's 1,000 of them, it might be a little bit of a drive-by. It becomes physically impossible to do that, but I do make the statement that I physically touch every invoice in the district. So then they're reviewed by me, and then they come to you for Board of Education approval. The checks are cut, and then once those checks are cut, we do another double check to compare the check to the pay voucher, to make sure that the vendor name and, and amount is accurate, and then those payments are sent out. So think of that 1,000 times in this packet. A lot of beginning-of-the-year bills in your packet tonight. I don't know if anybody had any specific questions. A large volume, and a large dollar amount also. I would entertain any questions. I didn't note any, it's just a lot of, like I said, beginning-of-the-year type bills that we're paying. Total of $2.3 million, I think it was, $2,311,000. The advanced payments breakdown was $9,622 was presented to you, and then we had pay vouchers of $37,468, $152,891 of food service bills.
Any questions for Mr. Lombard on the bills and claims? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lombard.
Okay, real quickly, we have limited financial reports, basically, in the first quarter of each of our fiscal years, but we always show the cash report for each month, required by law to do that. For the month of July, there was $22,540,000 at the beginning of the month, just a little over $3 million of receipts, and just under $6 million of dispersments in July, left $19 million at the end of the month, of which $10.2 million was in the general fund, $5.1 million was in the capital fund, $1,361,000 in the special education fund, $37,000 in the enterprise fund, and $2.3 million in the capital projects fund. The $3,017,000 was itemized on the next page, the itemization of the receipts, pretty typical receipts. Investment report showed one CD of $1 million, still $316,000 of U.S. Treasuries for our capital building project, and then $255,000 in a bond fund money market. I've met with several banking institutions. Public money is, is not a good thing in today's economy. It's just, it's, it's very, very difficult for the financial institutions and the school. I mean, it's, and I'm not smiling when I say this, folks, it's getting to the point where you guys are going to have to pay them to hold this money for you. And I'm not kidding you. It's because public money has to be collateralized, they have to have 110% backing that up in U.S. Treasuries. So I don't know how a small bank can even manage that. So we've been over and over and over it, but there's just no easy solution in the world we live in today. Payroll and benefit summary, payroll for the month of July was $1,660,000, related deductions and benefits was just under $1.5 million. It did include a trust and agency statement for the month of July, review $134,000, and also a capital projects financial statement at the end of July. You can see that we're getting down towards the end of that. $18.2 million receipts and $16.2 million of expenditures. I'd entertain any questions?
Hearing no questions from Mr. Lombard, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you very much. That takes us to our general business section, administration reports. Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few items to brief you on here this evening. Inspiration Elementary School construction continues. I would note that our, our principal and secretary are in, in their respective spaces and beginning to work through that organizational process. We are working through punctualist items and items that need to be completed prior to the start of school. So that process continues. Right now, you could build a really giant fort out of cardboard, given all of the furniture that they're unpacking and putting together and, and whatnot. So there's boxes everywhere, it looks a little bit, it looks a little bit clustery with the boxes, but things are coming together and will come together for the start of school on August 25th. It is relevant to note, there is a ribbon cutting in Open House on August 17th. That ribbon, ribbon cutting is at 5:00 PM, and then we'll provide individuals with the opportunity to take a tour of that building following that. The Brandon Valley Distance Learning Academy is an option for families this year in the event that they choose to utilize distance learning, because it best meets the needs of their family and/or there are concerns and/or issues surrounding the pandemic response plan. Would note that August 11th is the deadline for individuals to notify us of their intent to enroll or transfer into the Distance Learning Academy, and individuals can contact their respective building principal for, for enrollment into the Distance Learning Academy. Brandon Valley High School addition priorities, we've talked about this, but want to make certain that we are continuing to clearly and concisely communicate this to our public. Our, our high school addition priorities, our general classrooms, ground floor special education classrooms, as well as some science lab classroom space. In addition to that, we're going to maximize land usage and upgrade the east side facility while minimizing an impact to parking. So this is an image of what we expect that, what we expect that addition to look like. Here on the end, I would note that that's the northeast corner of the building, and this is the east face. So that's the, that's the location of that addition. When we talk about the timeline, we're working through some of those planning processes right now. We'll really ramp up our committee meetings and our communications with staff in terms of what the floor plan looks like and some of those types of items. We'll look to bid that project here this winter, with construction occurring from the spring of '22 to the spring of '23, with the high school addition being open for the '23-'24 school year. I think there is some level of concern in terms of cost of construction, just because that seemed to have ticked up lately. So we'll monitor that. We'll certainly be in a situation where if we need to value engineer, we most certainly will do that to stay within the constraints that we have budgetarily. So that's the timeline on the high school project. Look forward to providing you more information on that as we work through that process. Calendar items for this upcoming school year, new staff are here on the 18th. We will have all of our teachers with us on the 19th. Monday, the 23rd, in-service and workshop, and then Tuesday, August 24th, morning in-service, afternoon workshop. Relevant to note, our all-staff welcome back is Tuesday, August 24th, from about 10:00 to 1:00. If you are available, stop If you are available, stop by and go from there. We start with a message in the activities center and then we transition to the cafeteria where the administration serves the meal to all of our staff. So certainly appreciate your help if you're able to be with us on Tuesday, August 24th for the all-staff welcome back. First day of school for students grades 1 through 12 will be August 25th and the first day for our kindergarteners and junior kindergarteners is Friday, August 27th. Those first two days, Wednesday and Thursday, our kindergarteners have scheduled open house meetings with their teachers. That was an item that came about last fall with our COVID-19 mitigation protocols and our lack of having an open house. We didn't want those youngsters to come to school the very first day, having never been there before, and we got great feedback on that. So we're going to continue to utilize that for our junior kindergarten and kindergartners. We also utilize that for our early childhood students. So their first day is actually Monday, August 30th. Our building administration is communicating that to all of those respective kiddos. And then lastly, you've seen some images of Inspiration Elementary, but I just provide you with an update on our exterior there. Signage is all up and ready to rock and roll. First through fourth grade wing for our classroom, you can get the common recurring theme. It's black, it's red with a couple of grays involved. There's no doubt that, there's no doubt that they're Brandon Valley links. And just an example of the restrooms. Certainly invite the public to our open house on August 17th. With that, I would certainly entertain any questions you have.
Here, just a couple of ones. And I assume that the next meeting will do it. Oh, yeah. Well, it's long, but.
Yeah, there we go. Thanks. I know we'll probably get information at the next meeting, but where are we at in terms of enrollment if you were to say today on par with what we were hoping, a little higher, a little lower? Where would you say we're at?
Sure. So I would say K-12, when I looked last month, we were trending good. It was our kindergarten numbers were looking strong and as you've heard so many times, our kindergarten numbers drive that, drive that enrollment growth number quite often. Our kindergarten numbers were looking strong. So about a month ago, they were good. I try not to look too frequently between about July 15th and the start of school just because there's some in and there's some out, but right now I would say stable.
So enrollment, I mean, in terms of class sizes as we look at, have we hired somebody? Have we needed to hire somebody because we're, you know, where's that at?
Not at this time, no. No additional classroom FTE at this point in time. I will tell you that we're evaluating, currently in the process of evaluating our elementary distance learning numbers and once we get a little closer to that cutoff date, like tomorrow afternoon, we'll engage in some conversation on whether or not we need to have two FTE in that position or whether or not we want to remove one of them, move them to an elementary classroom and utilize our SIR funds as a classroom, class size reduction grant, which is an acceptable use within the SIR funds. So that it wouldn't be a change of budget, it would just be simply a reassignment of them to a different task per se.
And they both taught previously in the elementary.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
That's not, that's not a.
Yes, absolutely. And we've been communicating with them over the course of last year, last spring and talked through how that might look in the event that numbers didn't warrant two or if we had to pull someone else in if it warranted a third. Right now, our distance learning numbers, K-12, are between 45-ish, 45 and 50 and they're spread out, K-12. So we'll see what happens over the course of the next few days. Once we finalize some of these other plans later this evening, that may impact families' choices, whether or not they choose to attend or want to opt into distance learning.
Certainly, get it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. Mr. Lumberg, anything additional? Thank you. All right. High school, Mr. Schluckaway.
All right, I'll be brief, but President Olm beat me to it. That's all right. We didn't actually introduce, so we'll do that right now. I'd like to welcome our two new associate principals that are at the high school. Principal Mitzi Moore, who we took from Watertown High School, and then Jordan Paula, who came from St. Peter High School District. So if you see them out and about, they'll probably introduce themselves because that's what they've been doing everywhere they go, but I'm not going to put them on the spot and put them up here to give a speech, but just wanted you guys to, you know, put a name with the face and they've hit the ground running and they're working well with me and getting used to my craziness. So appreciate everything they've done up to this point. Couple of quick things from the high school. We're going, if you drive by our parking lot in the morning, it almost looks like we're in school. Marching band's going, dance, softball, everything this today was. Football? Football and golf got going today. So it's almost like we're in school and, you know, it's great to have kids on campus and we're excited for the year. Wednesday afternoon, we'll have the senior retreat. That's an annual thing we started years ago that we love. And then the following Wednesday on the 18th, we'll have freshman unity day where it's the seniors leading the day with our freshmen and getting them acclimated to the high school. So super excited for the school year and look forward to getting students back on that first day. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll let them off the hook tonight, too. So, all right. Mr. Thorson.
Just a couple of quick things as we're gearing up for the school year. We're wrapping up scheduling. Schedules will be released on Friday, so our middle school kids are looking for that. And then next Monday, we are going to have an orientation day for the seventh grade students because they didn't get to come over last year. So we are bringing them on campus for a short orientation in small groups. We did that last year and that seemed to work out really well, so we're going to duplicate that. So we're just gearing up and getting ready for August 25th.
Thank you. I don't see Dr. Nelson. Interim at school, Mr. Skivston?
No.
Mr. Pearson? All right. Ms. Sotien, anything special ed or special services? Sorry.
Is this on? Okay. I just have one little thing, something that we're going to do new this year for the in-service days. I'm going to collaborate with TeachWell staff and give a professional development on disabilities to our teacher assistants and classified staff. So I'm excited about that.
Thank you. Sounds wonderful. Elementary is Ms. Foster?
No thanks.
Mrs. Hoffcamp?
No thanks.
Mr. Horace?
No.
Mrs. Palmer? Mrs. Nelson?
Can I ask Ms. Nelson to, can we get an update on the ELA? I'm just, I mean, it's a million dollar purchase, so I'm kind of wondering what went on this summer and how we, you know, where we're at this point and then maybe, you know, what the assessment process looks like to make sure it's money well spent, so to speak.
Yes.
Thanks.
We did a training in the spring. It was our last added-on in-service day at the end of the school year. So all the teachers received their teacher additions, which was really lucky because many things are backordered now and most teachers are waiting for teachers additions across the country, but we got ours in May. So we're good with that. After the school year ended, then we had a team of teachers come in and they developed scope and sequence documents so that everybody knew the pacing for the school year. And so we have that in place. We are doing some more training with the teachers additions during in-service this fall. And then the committee that shopped for the curriculum will meet four times throughout the school year to check in and see how things are going, what worked well and what's coming up next. So that's the plan for PD. Most of the materials have come in, a few backordered items. We're missing some fifth grade math books right now and third and fourth grade student additions, but we're working on plans to get us through. The latest backorder date that I have right now is the third grade additions for September 25th. So we'll keep working through those. There's nothing we could have done differently. They were ordered as soon as they could be ordered and so that's just the way it rolls with COVID this year. Anytime you make a purchase, it seems like they tell you that it's backordered due to COVID.
And then a question on another topic and that is staff development. So I see the schedule and it says in-service workshop. What exactly, because that's your, one of your areas, correct?
Yes.
So what exactly are the plans for the three days? How does that break out? What's it look like? I mean, do we have an outside speaker? Is it being done by the principals? What's the, what's, what's it look like?
We have three half-day in-services. The first half-day in-service is staff meetings. Each principal is responsible for facilitating their traditional back-to-school information. The second staff in-service day is content and grade-level meetings. That's where they'll do curriculum work. And then the third one is a combination of the principals' planning, staff development. They each picked a theme this year for their building and they've planned that and they'll plan periodic staff development throughout the year. And then also Dr. Larson's welcome back speech is the other part of the third in-service day.
And then the workshop day means that they have an opportunity to work in their rooms, so to speak, or work with their colleagues or whatever.
Yes.
I think sometimes we see these things in, the public doesn't necessarily know what those is, so sometimes, those are. So sometimes I think we need to stop and kind of explain, but thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Henshaw, anything tonight?
No.
Okay. Mr. Frecking?
No.
All right. That takes us to board policy and we have proposed first readings on a couple policies.
We do. Thank you, Madam Chair. As you have been briefed for the last, I think, four or five months as we've talked about, the requirement for schools to allow for the administration of medical cannabis to qualifying students, we are here at our first reading. As previously explained to you guys, our policy was going to be very straightforward and what I would classify as the most conservative approach to this new requirement as it currently, as it currently sits. And you also think it's important to note that this is one of those policies that over the course of the next year, the next legislative session, there may be tweaks and/or changes as the situation evolves. So policy JHCDE, administration of medical cannabis to qualifying students. Any request to administer a student medical cannabis will require the following. The student must be a medical cannabis cardholder. A copy of the valid medical cannabis card must be on file with the school. Only the registered designated caregiver shall administer medical cannabis to the student. Only non-smokable medical cannabis may be administered and medical cannabis is not allowed to be stored on school property. All documentation required administrative rule must be on file with the school prior to the administration of medical cannabis on school property and any change to the student's medical cannabis cardholder status must be reported to the school. There are a couple of items that I would note. We're combing, in the process of combing, a couple of other policies that may have to just receive a little bit of a tweak because of medical cannabis and the general topic. And then the other thing that I wanted to just tell you is that in the unlikely event that we have a new student transfer from out of state and they possess a non-resident medical cannabis card, the administration will work to verify the information with the out-of-state Department of Health and once that's verified, we may allow the administration of medical cannabis by the caregiver to the child as outlined in the policy above because there's going to be a little bit of a lag before we start to see South Dakota medical cannabis cards be issued by the Department of Health. Probably not going to see those until November. So I just wanted to be completely transparent and tell you that's how we would handle that in the event that we have that situation arise. With that being said, any questions regarding the administration of medical cannabis to qualifying students at this time? Okay. Participation of alternative instruction students. So this is again the non, or I'm sorry, this is the public exempt students being able to participate in activities. So homeschool students or alternative instruction students being able to participate, participate in activities. What I can tell you is that resident alternative instruction students may participate in school activities. All of the items that are crossed out were restrictive items within our policy that required them to take a certain number of classes, et cetera. So all of that has to go away because resident students, we have, we are required to allow resident alternative instruction students to participate in activities. And then the other item that really happens is that non-resident alternative instruction students may apply for open enrollment for the purpose of participating in activities. Policy JECBR, our administrative regulation criteria for open enrollment recommendations, that's utilized to determine approval or denial of said application. So you as a board, because we get the quantity of open enrollment applications that we do, you through policy have made it an administrative regulation for us to approve or deny based on capacity, based on, based on programming ability and size of programs, all of the, all of the factors that are associated with capacity is granted to us through that administrative regulation. So the piece is very simple. Resident homeschool students may participate in extracurricular activities or activities K-12. Non-resident alternative instruction students may apply for open enrollment and we will process that open enrollment in accordance to the administrative regulation.
If we can revisit the last meeting, I think we said something, if it's a sport where we cut, then we would consider that to be.
Yes, so that is most certainly a clear-cut example of capacity. I would say that when I, when I reviewed our administrative regulation, it talks about educational programming and it talks about a variety of things. And one of the unique challenges that you face in this type of circumstance is, let's say, for example, we have a non-resident alternative instruction student applied to participate in activities. Once you accept that open enrollment, even if it's only for the sake of extracurricular activities, once you accept that open enrollment, they are your student. And if they say to you, I want to come to school tomorrow, they get to come to school tomorrow. So the complexity associated with only activities, there's another layer where they could change their mind and you would need to be able to accommodate their educational programming. And I believe that through our administrative regulation, we're able to evaluate all of those circumstances and make an informed decision. I will obviously communicate very closely with our building level principals as well as our activities director as we work to determine the capacity of our programs, not just extracurricular, but also educational.
Not devil's advocate, but so if I'm trying to put that in more layman's terms, I can't get my kid into the junior class because it's full, but I can open enroll my kid into the soccer program and we have a space, so we take them for open enrollment for soccer because we're not cutting and now the kid can go to 11th grade the next day.
No, not necessarily would the open enrollment to only play soccer be approved because if I can't, I do not have the ability to provide at that grade level because my class is at capacity. I would be able to look at the capacity as a whole because again.
As a whole, yep.
Once you accept them, they are yours in entirety. Educational programming, extracurricular activities, the whole shoot and match.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the concern that's been expressed by some and so it's a big picture. It's not just the little picture of the activity, whatever it is.
And we have, we have not had a request from a non-resident. We have had a couple of requests for residents and that's, that's very, very easy to manage and accommodate. They're required to meet all the requirements that our kids are in terms of birth certificates, physicals, academic requirements, if they're high school students, all of those various things are expected of them.
Yep. Thank you.
Jared, I got a question. What about a kid that participates in a winter sport like wrestling where he makes his first choice football and he gets denied, but yet he says, okay, I'll go to school there. But yet can he go, can he do soccer or can he do wrestling then without getting cut? Or basketball?
Sure. So there are rules and regulations established by the South Dakota High School Activities Association that determine eligibility and whether or not an individual is eligible on day one or if there is a period of time where they are not eligible on day one. What I can tell you is in high school, I know that every child is allowed one open enrollment transfer of athletic eligibility. If that comes in the middle of the year, I believe there is a number of days that they are required to sit out, 45 days. Thank you, Mr. Frecking, for being my assistant on that one. So there is a, there is a number of days that they are required to sit out before they become eligible again. Good question. Thank you.
Okay. If any other questions come up before the next meeting, please feel free to contact Superintendent Larson with those. Thank you. That takes us to general business, item number one, 2122 pandemic response plan survey results. Information only.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So in the month of July, we, we as a pandemic response planning committee worked through So in the month of July, we, we as a pandemic response planning committee worked through a process evaluating the national, state, and local circumstances that, that we are currently in and dealing with. I can tell you that this is an extremely challenging topic, an extremely difficult topic, and I think as we look across the, as we look across the country, there are certain locations that are in much different place than South Dakota for whatever reason. And one of the really difficult things about leading through this time is you have to evaluate that national perspective, but you're also in a situation where you have to evaluate your, your local community perspective and your, your state perspective. So what I would tell you is, we as a, we as a committee met, we worked through our pandemic response plan, specifically looking at the big items that we wanted to gain some level of understanding on whether or not our community, community was in support of what we thought they were in support of. So, when we developed our mitigation protocols and processes, as I said, we met through the month of July on multiple occasions, and ultimately what we, what we looked at was national, state, and then local community, and how our local community was behaving, interacting, and/or functioning through the pandemic. Whether you want to talk about grocery store, or open gym, or restaurants, all of those things, we evaluated all of those things. So, it's important to note that the survey was an important part of the process for us, just to make certain that the community, we were aligned with community expectations. Schools generally are reflective of your community, and we wanted to make certain that we understood what our community's level of support would be for the recommended approach. It's relevant to note, survey was open for approximately one week. We had over 2,100 respondents. There are a couple of other key items that are critical to note. COVID-19 positive individuals are required to isolate by the Department of Health. They have statutory authority to make an individual isolate if they are COVID-positive. Like, they can tell you, you have COVID, you can't leave the house. If you leave the house, you could be arrested, taken back to your house. They have statutory authority to isolate individuals. So it's important to note that individuals that are COVID-19 are required to isolate as directed by the Department of Health, which is within their statutory authority. It's important to note that plexiglass barriers will be used sparingly and only upon request. And I say that because a lot of different things work together, right? So if you can remember back to last fall, we decided in the month of October that if you were protected by a mask or barrier and you were identified as a close contact, you were allowed to stay in school. Well, at our elementary school, where we had very, very little masking, but we had the plexiglass up on our respective desks, if there was a COVID-positive case in that elementary building, we were able to basically keep those kiddos in school. If the plexiglass is gone and they are not wearing a mask, then we're in a situation where you're going to deal with close contact things. In addition to that, we found the management of identifying, tracking, and working through the close contact process to be extremely difficult to manage and work through. So, those are just some items I need to note, because they all kind of play off of one another in terms of how the committee came to the recommendations that they did. And then lastly, and I think most importantly, it's important to note that our pandemic response plan and our mitigation strategies are subject to change if necessary. If warranted and if circumstances exist, we do reserve the right to change the plan. So, in terms of our masking protocol, what we put forth before our, our patrons was voluntary masking. Individuals are welcome to wear cloth, cloth face covering if they so choose. It is also important to note that the CDC changed their recommendation on about day six of our survey. So our survey went out the 21st, and I believe they went from, the CDC changed from individuals under the age of 12 and non-vaccinated individuals, and all individuals on public transportation. They recommended wearing a mask. They changed and they altered their recommendation to be that all individuals wear a mask in the event that a community is within, with, has substantial spread. Minnehaha County does have substantial spread, according to the Department of Health, so relevant item to note. So anyway, we put to, we put to our, our patrons voluntary masking as the protocol to see if they supported that, that protocol. Eighty-eight percent of the respondents supported voluntary masking. The second item that was a large item was the daily individual health screening process. Ultimately, what we have done is we have moved the screening process off-site to the home. So we're asking parents to screen their children before they come to school with two questions. Do you feel sick? Do you have a cough, shortness of breath, headaches, sore throat, or a fever? And at-home is the big item on this, and it's underlined. Last fall, we worked to screen kids at school. That was again a, a process that became somewhat unmanageable, whether they clicked the wrong button, or whether they on purpose said that they had that, it just, it just caused an unmanageable set of circumstances. So we want to trust our, our families and ask them to screen their kiddos before they come to school. And 81% of respondents supported the at-home daily individual health screening process. The next item is a protocol for individuals exhibiting symptoms. So any individual exhibiting symptoms of illness will be offered a surgical mask, be evaluated by our student health services, and may be required to leave the building. The individual's return will be based on the following criteria: 24 hours fever-free, without the use of fever-reducing medication, and in the event that multiple symptoms are present, our school nurses may recommend additional measures. So last year, what we had, was we had a situation whereas if a kiddo came, came down and they said they had a headache, they were masked, they were isolated, they were required to leave, and they had to be out of school for 10 days or with clearance from a healthcare provider, or their doctor. So, that created a lot of challenges because, well, kiddo went home for a headache, the headache got better, mom and dad wanted him to come back, that, that was a difficult challenge. In addition to, we started to see providers that would respond with, they'd write them a note that'd say, "Student may come back to school, but they may or may not have COVID depending on a test." You know, I mean, so we got a lot of, it was a difficult situation to manage. So what we're asking is that our school nurses be granted some level of flexibility in the event that there's multiple symptoms, but if there is one symptom, they will evaluate them and may or may not require them to leave the facility. But there will be, there will no longer be required 10 days or a required clearance form from a provider. Eighty-nine percent of our parents supported the protocol for an individual exhibiting Close contact protocol, so we will support the, our students and staff that are identified as close contacts and communicated with by the South Dakota Department of Health. Students will be offered their work, they'll maintain their engagement through their learning management system, and, and the absence will not count against them. I would note that contact tracing, again, will no longer be done by Brandon Valley School District staff in the school setting. So we will not identify the individuals that were within close proximity to a positive case, inform those parents or communicate with those parents directly, and then communicate in a mass way to everyone. We will no longer, we'll no longer do that in accordance to this recommendation. Seventy-nine percent of our, of our patrons that responded to the survey supported the recommended close contact protocol. Positive case communication, so school no longer send an email notification on a positive COVID-19 case within a building in the event circumstances necessitate. Following consultation with the Department of Health, school-wide COVID-19 communications may occur. So, last year, as, as promised, we said that if, in the event that there was a COVID-19 case in school, you would be notified via email that there was a COVID-19 case in school. We did that throughout the entirety of the year. What we found was that very early on, you had, we as a school had to communicate with all the close contacts before we sent the email, because if we didn't communicate with the close contacts, we would get flooded with calls and people would say, "Well, what room was it in? Was my kid by them? I need to know." So there was a lot of anxiety associated with communicating that there was a positive case. So, what I would tell you is if we don't close contact trace and inform folks, it was going to be, it was going to create a very bad situation if we continued to send these large emails, these mass emails regarding a positive case within a school. With that being said, we also received feedback that the emails became ineffective and redundant. They'd get an email, they would delete it. The first one maybe, the first few mattered, but pretty soon they got, they were just being deleted and they weren't even being looked at, that was communications that we had received. So as a committee, we wanted to put out there, would you support no longer communicating positive case information via email unless the situation necessitates? And 84% of respondents indicated that they supported the recommended positive case communication The last item, school district facility access and use, usage. The committee recommends opening the facilities for access and usage with no restrictions on visitation, activity attendance, or outside organization facility usage. And about 90% or a little over 90% of respondents supported, or supported that respective So lastly, on the last slide, I just put together all of the respective question data points for conclusion, and would also note that our recommended pandemic response plan as well as our pandemic response survey are available online at, on our COVID-19 information webpage. They were made available to our parents last week on, I think it was Tuesday, they, Tuesday they got uploaded. So last week, they got uploaded, communicated with our parents via email that the information was out there and available for their review, so that's just an item to note. Our COVID-19 information webpage is a central communication hub, and that has proven to be extremely valuable when working with our patrons and our parents. So, if people have questions, go there first, that's the best point of information that we have. It's reviewed and updated on a regular basis. In addition to these types of items, they'll also find our ready-to-learn plan, the distance learning information, and other relevant pieces of this puzzle. So, with that, I would certainly entertain any questions you have regarding the survey summary.
I know it's unusual, could I make a couple comments as a physician, just as a physician who dealt with lots of this last year, or would that have to...
Sure. I yield to you.
Sure.
Quick.
Sorry, I just want, I'm, I just want to be helpful, because as a parent and a physician, I kind of have a couple of things that hopefully you guys know, but if you don't. One is, as someone who does research and has set up surveys, you will get the answer that you ask, and there was no, you just asked if, about masks, you just asked if voluntary masking was okay. You never asked like, would you prefer recommended, would you prefer voluntary, would you prefer required? It was just voluntary or nothing. So, you'll get the answer you ask. Like, that's, I don't know how valid that is, is what I'm saying. But, second of all, I don't know if you realize this, but it takes two weeks sometimes for the Department of Health to contact all of the close contacts. So if you guys aren't going to do it, which, again, you're not the Department of Health, I totally get that it's overwhelming to do it, but I want you to realize that if there's a big outbreak going on in the Sioux Falls area, your students are not going to know for two weeks that someone in their class had COVID. And by then, it's going to be way too late, because they're going to have given it to everybody else. And that's literally how long it takes for the Department of Health. That's how long it took last year. I don't think it'll be any better this year. And then, you're totally right, everyone just deleted those emails because it was the whole school. However, if possible, I think it would be much more effective to actually send an email to the class, because that's a much smaller group. If people know they're only getting an email, if some, a child in their class, I know that's more harder in middle school, high school, like, that's kind of another story, but for elementary kids, I think that that would be very useful, and that would be possibly a way to get around the close contact thing, because if you let the classroom know, they're all going to know, hey, this, my kid was possibly a close contact, but you won't have to do all of that, but they'll also find out sooner than they would from the Department of Health. So just, just a comment, as a physician who dealt with this last year. Thank you so much, I know that's not common. I really appreciate it. Thanks.
You're welcome. All right, any further questions for Dr. Larson on the survey results? All right, that takes us into number two, the 2122 COVID-19 pandemic response plan.
Madam Chair, I would just note, the reason that I set up this specific agenda item in the way that I did is I wanted you to be able to, if you wanted to, approve items 2A through F all at one time, or you could pull it apart, and I do item 2A if that was, that was necessary, if something needed to be tweaked or changed from your respective vantage point. So that's the reason that this specific agenda item looks, looks the way it does, and it's broke down for you in the same way that we did the, the survey, for lack of a better phrase.
I would move that we break them apart and we approve, or not approve, or whatever, each item individually. A through F.
Um, do we need to do a roll call, or? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Lombard.
The motion on the floor is to approve the items A through F individually. Telkot?
Yes.
Odie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Yes. With that, item A, the masking protocol, that's the first one up for discussion.
So, the masking protocol as recommended is voluntary masking. That's the, that's the masking protocol that has been brought forward as the recommendation by the committee. Yes, you're going to have to, you're going to have, because you, because you wanted, you want...
We're just trying to...
Oh, you're not going to? It's, it's not an amendment or an addendum, it simply is, let me pull it for you. Yes, you're dissecting question. 2122, right up here, voluntary masking, pandemic response plan.
Point of discussion, yes? So does a motion need to be made first, and then we can have the discussion?
Yeah, motion needs to be made first, then a second, and then we can have the discussion.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we leave it the way it's stated as is, voluntary.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right, there's been a first and a second, we can have further discussion if you choose to.
The masking thing concerns me... The masking thing concerns me in the sense that we have a group that can't protect themselves. I mean, I understand that they can wear a mask, that elementary kids can wear a mask. I get that. But they don't have the ability of protection of a shot. So that concerns me on a variety of levels. The fact that, I'll agree with Dr. Kelly, that the Delta variant is a game changer. And from what I understand, it's probably not the last variant and the next one will probably be worse. So that's what concerns me. We're not dealing with last year. And so we're taking the Plexiglas down, not really, well, we're certainly not requiring masks, we're taking the Plexiglas down. But we're going to be exposed to greater risk than last year with no more protection, actually less, because the barriers are gonna go down. That's a concern for me. Last year, my concern was that we had both employees and students that we were responsible for taking care of. I feel less a concern for the employees because we're at a stage where you can get the shot if you want the shot. You know, and so a certain part of that is on you. The problem with the Delta is, of course, I can get the shot, which I have, which probably maybe I should have gotten sooner before I had my three-week bout with COVID. But having said that, they can protect themselves, but the problem is with the variant, we can still give it. So if I'm an elementary teacher, I can still give the Delta variant to my kids. To me, that's a horrifying thought. I can't imagine what a difficult thing that would be. And how transmissible it is, it also scares me. And I don't know if it's possible to say, well, at the elementary level, you have to have a mask, or to say until you've been inoculated or, you know, got the vaccine, you have to wear a mask. And again, then we're playing the game of chasing them down and I know what that means to you people. I totally get it. Administrators, I haven't been in your world from this part, but I understand what that means, chasing them around. And it's not because of this. But I'm gonna tell you, in my time as a high school principal, I buried more kids than I wanted to. One is more than I wanted to bury. And I attended too many funerals of high school kids. God forbid, we gotta attend a funeral of an elementary kid that dies from COVID and we didn't do enough to stop it. Not saying that if we require vaccine or we require masking at the elementary level, that it's gonna stop it. I understand that there's still possibilities and kids are kids and all of those kinds of things. I just don't wanna have to attend those if it's preventable. Burying staff members and burying kids, the worst days of my time as a building administrator. I don't think this does enough to prevent that possibility. Whatever the proposal comes, I gotta vote no. I believe that masking should be, at the very least, mandatory for elementary kids. I believe we should be putting the barriers back up. I understand that that's really frustrating for the kids. For some of them, that's more frustrating than the masking. Kids are precious. Said enough.
Just two things, well, could be more, but of course, I think we're all agree upon that students are important, safety, my number one goal. I think what we've come to find out that it was more the staff that we needed to worry about, the elderly, the older, the older staff. I don't, I don't wanna be naive to say that this isn't gonna be an ongoing problem, vaccinated or not. The people that are getting vaccinated, I'm sorry, you're still getting sick. I don't think it's all gonna be a one-shot catch-all. I think the way that we handled it last year, worst, best-case scenario, you know, you gotta be able to adjust on the go. And I think our district did an outstanding job. Did we do it perfect? No. But that's where we're able to come back. You're right, you're never gonna please everybody. And absolutely, worst-case scenario, a kid. But, thank you.
My concern is that the Delta variant isn't last year and it has an impact, a greater impact on children than the previous. And it's so much more contagious. It's not a question of if, it's simply a question of when.
This is a very touchy subject. I think, right now, what we have in place has worked. And like what Dr. Telkot has said, this Delta is a different breed. And when you're dealing with young kids, it's scary that these are the ones that are really gonna be targeted with this Delta virus, supposedly. I feel we need to do the utmost that we can to prevent this from spreading. I know elementary teachers probably would not like the fact to keep the mask on the kids. It might be a hard deal to do. But when you're talking young kids, young families, anybody, a loss of a life, you can't, you can't, it's just not right. So I'm gonna lean and, I'll be with like Greg Telkot and vote no on that.
Okay. So having heard from everyone, we have a motion on the table to take the masking protocol...
Masking, voluntary.
Sorry. Voluntary masking as presented on the table. We'll do a roll call vote and if it would end up in a tie, it would move to the next board meeting. Is that clear? All right.
Are we allowed to make an alternative motion? Or do we wait for the vote, then make an alternative motion? Or do we do the vote, if it ends in a tie, it has to wait till the next meeting?
No, there could be a second motion. Another motion made after.
Let's vote on the first. Let's vote on the first then.
It's cleaner to just vote on the motion on the first.
Absolutely. Get it.
All right. Roll call vote, Mr. Lombard.
Scott?
Yes.
Odie?
No.
Telkot?
No.
Ohm?
I propose a second, if you will, motion. Since children are not allowed to get the shot as of yet, until such time that the shot is fully authorized by the FDA, in other words, determined as safe is what the rest of us had the opportunity to take, I would make a motion that masking be mandatory at the elementary and intermediate school level and be strongly encouraged at the middle school and high school level. Simply because the students at the middle school and the high school level have the opportunity to get the shot, to get the vaccination and to thus protect themselves. I understand that that's creating a dual system. The reason I include the intermediate schools is because I believe that that's when we're gonna start seeing, some kids are gonna be 12 somewhere and I don't want the administrators having to chase around, whatever. So a set rule at those two levels. So my motion would be mandatory masking at the elementary and intermediate school level until such time that the shots are fully authorized and available, not just authorized but available to our children at those levels. And that it be strongly encouraged, recommended if you will, at the middle school and high Is that right? Worded that well enough for a motion? Does that make sense?
What I understood, the masking protocol, your motion would be for our masking protocol for masks to be mandatory, grade 6, and strongly encouraged, grade 7, 12.
That's correct.
If I don't get a second, then the motion will die for lack of a second?
Mm-hmm.
And then it will be brought back at the next board meeting? It's kind of what I'm hearing.
Kind of what I hope happens. I don't think we should throw this on our people and say, you gotta do this out of the blue. But I just wanted to create that it's out there for discussion, so that people understand what might be out there for discussion. So I'm very good with it not moving forward.
Okay.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Thank you.
With that, understanding that this will be brought back at the next board meeting, understanding that this decision could not be made at this board meeting, I would encourage parents to utilize their resources and make their decisions based on what their family would like to do without knowing exactly what the decision was made until the next board meeting to decide what they think they need to do for the next school year since the cutoff for online learning is August 11th. So I highly encourage you, meet together as a family, figure out what you want to do. There is no easy answer to this and if you think we're not all up here having anxiety and sweating, you're mistaken. So thank you. All right. That takes us to the daily health screening process.
Yes, Madam Chair, recommendation for the daily health screening process to be completed at home.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Lombard.
Telkot?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Odie?
Yes.
Ohm?
Yes. Item C, protocol for individuals exhibiting symptoms.
As previously presented, individual will be offered surgical mask, evaluated by Student Health Services and may be required to leave the building. Student Health Services has required some flexibility in the event that multiple symptoms are present.
Who would like to make that motion? You don't need to repeat it, just say so moved.
So moved. Second.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call vote, Mr. Lombard.
Telkot?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Odie?
Yes.
Item D, close contact protocol.
Again, Madam Chair, item 2D, close contact protocol. That would be where we recommend that close contacts adhere to the South Dakota Department of Health guidance, close contact tracing not done by school staff.
Entertain a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Sorry.
Telkot?
Aye.
Odie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Yes. Item E, positive case communication.
Again, Madam Chair, positive case communication. School will no longer communicate via email on each individual positive case. We will communicate after consultation with the Department of Health if circumstances necessitate.
Can, so again, I'm out of the loop. Last year, my kid's gone, so I didn't get the emails, so the opportunity to delete. But, so we didn't send like to Mr. or Mrs. so-and-so's third-grade classroom, there's a kid in this classroom.
Dr. Telkot, what we did is in the event that we had a positive COVID case within a classroom, we waited until that positive case was confirmed by the Department of Health or the medical provider. We had to have it confirmed. Once we confirmed that information, our staff then went and evaluated the space in the classroom, seating charts, were kids absent there in the day, there's an infectious period, 48 hours prior to symptom onset, all of those various things. At that point in time, we then assembled our close contact list internally, communicated with all of the individuals that were within that situation and told them that they were a presumptive close contact and they were required to mask and be screened in the event that they were protected by mask or barrier. If they were not protected by a mask or barrier, they were required to leave for 14 days. After we had communicated with all of those individuals, we then sent a text message to everyone in the respective school building that said, "On August 29th, there was a confirmed positive COVID case within your school district. Please monitor your child for symptoms. All close contacts have previously been informed." Period. That was what we did.
Just wondering if it's possible to just, you know, I'm very good with reducing the close contact responsibilities and all of this stuff that these people are doing and by the time they get through that and whatever. But just to say, all the students of Mr. and Mrs. so-and-so's third-grade class, there's a COVID case in your class, in the classroom, we're not gonna identify it, but there's a close, once it's confirmed and whatever, there's a COVID case in that classroom, please monitor your child for symptoms. Period. Nothing more. Doesn't have to go to the whole school, doesn't have to, you know, and I don't know if that makes any sense. I don't know. I'm just trying to...
Well, I respect and understand that position very clearly. Some challenges associated with it are, you have walk-to-read in your elementary school for reading programs. So your classes are now going to go back to intermingling, so it's not a matter of just send it to one class, but it's a matter of identifying all of the individuals in that situation. At the intermediate school, they're on teams, but they change. They go into various buildings, lunchtime, before school, after school, activities, all of those respective items. We found it, the reason that we brought it forward the way we have is because it was extremely unmanageable. When you notify an individual they were a close contact and they're required to quarantine for 14 days unless they have a negative test, after day five, they can come back on day eight. Or if they didn't have any symptoms, after 10 days, they could come back on day 11 and it's day 12, don't worry about us calling you. It just was, it was just extremely unmanageable.
I totally get that. So if I understand, we're not separating out the elementary kids this year like we did last year.
Correct.
Because...
Correct. Core isolation was against every best practice that we really instilled in terms of, like I said, our reading protocol, our ability to move kids to the appropriate level, but not isolate them in a specific classroom, but rather allow them to be split more evenly in our respective elementary grades, but then within our protocol, our reading protocol, move them to their appropriate location, for lack of a better phrase.
And I get that. But this is the very susceptible, this group is susceptible, this group doesn't have a protection and it might require us for another semester until, or quarter semester till the shots and things are available, to do that practice to protect those kids with the thought that once the shot's available and the families can choose to protect their kids, then we open the doors back to what we did. I totally agree and understand that the best case is to have kids in close proximity to each other, doing things together, reading in their appropriate groups, doing all of those kinds of things. I understand the educational value to that. But if we can't mitigate these, the spread, the education value is they're gonna be at home. And we know that that's the worst possible situation educationally, is that they're at home and they're not in the building. So I was hoping that at least until the shot became available to all of the kids, that we would continue with the practices to try and keep them safe and in school. That parts, I guess, a concern to me. I guess being split up is better than not being in school because you're out for X number of days or weeks or whatever. I don't see it as a long-term thing that we have to do. I don't see it as a long-term thing that we have to do. Again, once, once the vaccine becomes available to kids five on up, that's then a family decision, and a lot of that then comes off of our plate. That's why I say with the staff, a lot of it's off of our plate now. They have that choice. And even at the high school, middle school level, those families with kids have that opportunity, they have that choice. Again, it's not perfect, we can still transmit it and all that, but they at least have the choice. Our elementary kids don't have the choice. So what do we do to protect them? And as much as I, I do, I appreciate public opinion surveys and all of that, but sometimes decisions are made and they're not popular, but they need to be made. I don't know. I guess I, I didn't, I have to apologize, I didn't read things deeply enough to understand that we weren't continuing to segregate the kids based on their grade, classroom, or whatever. When would we go back to that? What would trigger that? What would trigger that?
I would say circumstances that necessitate us to move back to a cohort isolation model through conversations with DOH and, and those, those various types of circumstances that exist. The one thing we can't do is we can't establish a specific number, or a percentage, or any of those things, because the, the level of flexibility necessary to manage and lead through this situation is extreme. For example, you can have, you can have 100 COVID cases in your high school, but if only 15 of those individuals were ever in your school when, when they were positive or infectious, the number is very different than the big number, right?
Sure.
And you found that very often, where individuals, we didn't always have to, individuals weren't always here during their infectious period for whatever reason.
Sure.
They screened at home, or someone in the, in the home was that, and they had invited by the, the close contact protocol, et cetera. In terms of the positive case notification, if you, as a board, feel compelled to communicate with the masses on positive cases, we can, we can do that. It will create a tremendous burden on your secretarial staff and the individuals that are answering the phones. When, when the message goes out, the first thing will be, "Was my kid close?" Or any of those things. So if you are going to require us to communicate with folks in a mass way, you also need to require us to at least identify close contacts and inform them prior to the notification going out.
My, my initial thought on it was, I didn't realize that we were not, in a sense, I don't like the word segregate, but that's what I'm going to use, okay? We're not separating these kids by their class. Having that as my thought process, that's where I said, "Well, let's just identify the third grade class, tell the parents, I don't, we don't need a mask, identify everybody, we just send it out to the third grade." If I have a, if I'm a parent and I have a kid in that third grade classroom, and there's a kid in that third grade classroom who was in the room and they were positive, I really think I'd like to know that, that there was a kid in my kid's classroom that was positive. But if we're going to blow the lines with all of these other kinds of things, maybe the, if we decide to make mandatory masking there, maybe that helps, I don't know. It's just, as a parent, I would want to know that one of the 25 kids in my child's classroom had COVID and they were in the room, or they had the Delta variant, which is very whatever. I would really want to know that, and I would want my school district to tell me that. Maybe I'm not sharing that a kid in your reading group, or a kid in this, or a kid in that, but at least in the classroom that they spend most of their day in, one of those kids. I don't know. I mean, I, it's not my, our job to tell you, you know, administrators, you guys have to make the best decisions for managing your school and taking care of your kids, so to come along and say, "Well, you guys should be segregating," or whatever. I mean, there's a certain point where we say, "I'm just saying, I'm a parent of a third grader, and there's a third grader in that classroom. Why didn't you, why didn't you tell me?
Absolutely.
I would like to have known." And, and...
And you would be in the 15% of the people that responded to our survey. And, and I, and I understand.
Well, I, but I don't think the survey question was framed that way. I don't think it was all framed around, I don't know that all of that information is as, as clear as just one sentence, vote yes, vote no. I, I don't know that I would lend that much, and I would also say, once again, that I don't know that we should be voting solely based on a survey result from a group of, of people who are very concerned and all of that. I think that gathering that information is important, but I don't think it's solely the thing that you make your decision upon. I'll just come back to, if you asked a parent, if there was a kid in your third grade classroom had had COVID, would you like to know? I'd like to know what the survey response is. I bet it's higher than 15%. I bet my next year retirement check, that it's higher than 15%, that they would like to know that there's a kid in their kid's classroom that has it. And that question wasn't asked of them. So taking it that way, it doesn't work for me.
If I may ask, I mean, obviously, the public's able to see this, I mean, we're, we're obviously talking about this. If, if they didn't understand the question, I know there was quite a few that asked me afterwards during the survey, moving forward, I mean, at, at what grade do they intermix throughout the school day? I mean, at, at what grade do they stay in their classroom all day long? I mean, is, is there, is there a, a grade that we cut off and say, "Okay, K through, or JK through fourth grade, we'll send out those emails"?
So what, what next year will look like in terms of cohorting, that won't exist. So your elementary kiddos will go to recess together, they'll ride the school bus together before, you know, those, those various things that, that people were passionately wanting back, come back. So think about the start of a school day for at 7:00 AM when a kiddo gets on a school bus, through the morning, or out at recess, through every recess, through lunch, through the end of the day, through, that's, that's what that will look like. We close contact trace to the very best of our ability this last year, and informed close contacts prior to sending out the notification. That was a lesson learned. Early on, we sent out the mass notification, and they, everyone wanted to know if their kid was a close contact, and it created an unmanageable situation for our office staff. In terms of, I'm going to be frank, I believe that the survey, in terms of positive case communication, was very clear. We told them that schools will no longer send email notification of a positive COVID-19 case within a building. Do you support that? Yes or no? That's...
He was in a building.
So, Dr. Telkot, members of the board, what I can tell you in terms of positive case communication, we will do what you direct us to do. If you want to communicate in a mass quantity way, we will close contact trace, and then we will communicate. And I'm not going to tell you that we can't do that because we did it for nine months last year. And if you feel as though that's what the community wants to do, we will gladly take on that task and responsibility.
I'm not making my motion based on what the community wants you to do, per se, because that's not always the role of the board. What I'm going to, and I'm not asking you to contact trace, it's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is, at the elementary level, and I understand all of the other pieces, apparently we're not going to worry about separating that or whatever, it still is helpful to know that in that classroom, there is a kid, and my kid spent most of, we can all agree that most of their day is spent in a classroom. There's all these other pieces, I get it, but most of the day is in that classroom, and many of them are friends, so they'll, they'll, at the recess, they'll play with a lot of the kids from their classroom, they'll eat lunch with a lot of kids from their classroom, that's a big part of their cohort. All I would like us to do is send an email home to the parents of that specific classroom that there is a case in, that classroom, once it's been confirmed. Doesn't have to go to everybody in the building, doesn't have to go to every kid that that kid might have encountered in that day, but for the parents of the 24 other kids in that classroom, they get notification only, only that. Just hit a button, there it is, there's a case in the class, it's been confirmed, it's on this date, done. They'll do with that information what they want, but they know their kid's been in that classroom during those days. It's not perfect, it's not, it's a blend of you're not chasing everything around with contact tracing, it's also a blend to that parent of the kid who says, "Boy, I really wish I'd have known." Don't know who that you're, you're jumping rope with at recess, don't know who you're sitting next to having your, how I really miss those mini corn dogs. But anyway, yeah, I would say at the elementary level, I don't think it's possible at the intermediate level. Right? Because don't they switch, so I think at the elementary level, K, pre-K or whatever through four, it's just not feasible at the intermediate school level, it's just not. They switch around, they do all those things, I don't see it. Again, it's not perfect, but it's one more piece of information that maybe could help a particular group. And it's not likely that if I get an email specific to my child's class, that I'll delete it.
And just to be clear, the Delta variant is only recognized by the State Department of Health, so the odds of you knowing if it's a Delta variant or not, it's not a hospital test that we can do.
No.
So just, just to make that clear, I just want people to understand that.
Just that they got, that they have COVID. Again, I, I come back to, you know, trying to get closer to where the CDC and the pediatricians are at. I mean, those are the experts.
Wait two days.
It might, it might, and we have the ability, I think it says in here, to be flexible.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Has there been a motion on this?
There hasn't been a motion on this yet, so...
So, Dr. Telkot, what I think I heard you say is you would move to, in terms of positive case communication protocol, you would move to inform parents at the classroom level, grades K4, and not inform parents of a positive case, grades 5-12.
Yeah, because we weren't going to inform, right? So yes, that's exactly what I, yes, thank you, that's exactly the elementary level, just within the classroom.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Lombard.
Telkot.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Odie.
Yeah.
Ohm.
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. Item F, facility access and usage.
Madam Chair, recommendation is to open facilities to our mentors, visitors, guests, no restrictions on activity attendance, et cetera.
So moved. So moved.
I've got a question. Okay.
Want a second or a first? Okay, now you can have a question.
Um, okay, there's no restrictions, but we have, it hasn't passed yet, so I don't know if we need to talk this way, but if you get some elementary K through, or K through four, that goes to a basketball game or a football game, am I reading this too complicated? Are they going to have to be masked then, versus the rest of us?
I would expect that if you, as a board, have mandatory masking for students grades K6, if that's the route you went, activities are an extension of the classroom, school activities would be, would be handled as such. We, we take great pride in that classroom, or extracurricular activities are an extension of the classroom. I think that they, that would be an expectation, but again, that this, the masking, the masking protocol was not determined this evening.
Yeah.
Relevant.
Any other questions, comments on facility access and usage? If not, roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Telkot.
Yes.
Odie.
Yeah.
Scott.
Yes.
Ohm.
Yes, motion passes, thank you. We will bring back that one item to the next board meeting. That takes us to number three, American Rescue Plan, elementary and secondary school, Esser School District.
I think, Madam Chair, the ARPSER funds have not been budgeted for this school year. Sorry, the ARPSER funds have not been budgeted for this school year. It's relevant to note that our various programs and plans that we are implementing for, for next, for this school year will be continued. For example, our reading interventionists will account for about a half a million dollars of the million available dollars, and then there will be other items outlined for expenditure and brought to you once that, once that budget is prepared for, again, next school year. At this point in time, I do not have any intent to expend ARPSER funds this school year. They will simply provide continuity of services for the things that we are doing and have established for this year. This is a federal requirement, to approve it, would recommend approval.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Items four through eight are there for consent, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Personnel, we have items one through 32, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Wow, second.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Items 33 to 37 are information only for you, there is an item under Communication Central Office Building Application Permits, and then a couple Board of, three Board of Education Thank Yous for you to review. That takes us to our formal board reports. Does anyone have a formal board report they would like to talk about tonight? Just on behalf of the TeachWell, since I serve on that board, I would just, again, like to say I'm pretty excited about you guys doing that together. We've grown TeachWell a lot the past couple of years, so if you haven't been there and seen what's going on, it's quite amazing, and I think they do a great job, and, you know, I'm a little biased, but, anyway. Any other reports for tonight?
I would just like to go back to the board, just on behalf of the Odie family, I, on behalf of Allison Rasmussen, who's in a special ed teacher, my brother Doug, who I work with, and myself, I would like to say thanks for your support due to the loss of my dad. Thank you.
Thank you, we've been thinking about you, Mr. Odie. Travel reports there for your review, and with that, that takes us to the end of our agenda, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, and thank you, everyone, for coming.